What is this broken place, Greg?
Park Place.
Out of park?
Is it Bob Diller?
Yeah.
Raise on jail mail.
Oh, yes.
Thirty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars and fifty-six.
Thirty-nine what?
Thirty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars and fifty-six.
Thank you. That's a lot.
How much do you want?
Yes.
No cell phone?
How you doing, buddy?
Stranger?
Bring your chairs. Um, okay. Sorry if you'd like to sit over here.
Tom, go around the corner and bring one of those chairs.
I'll go get them.
I'll sit right here.
Was it?
Yeah, Tom, sit right there.
I'm gonna read.
It seems like with that board in there, the manager just going easy. I mean, they really notice them. They're not near. I think they got some woman.
I'm learning.
Sorry.
Yeah, David.
Sit over here. You have to behave yourself.
Oh, I'll sit over here. How you doing, David?
Hey, how you doing?
Good, Mike. How you doing this morning?
I'm doing good.
Look beautiful right over there.
Yeah, it's pretty as for you.
Bruce.
Uh-huh.
Hey, good morning.
This is John Deere. I know this is El.
This is the southern states.
Did you find your?
Yeah.
You find your.
I like my John Deere.
Yes, I did have some guests at the LA PC meeting to get a better idea of some of the things that we discussed. So I think that that group is going to grow. Everything's there in print from West Virginia, already westvirginia.gov. We have practical stuff. We're back to the challenge of having the information put out is not a challenge. It's getting the message, getting it distributed. It's no different than.
I put you on there.
Oh, you did? She's coming in.
The challenges of any clergy, who has the right message. If you don't want to hear it, if you have.
That's right. It's a material.
Yes.
Two minutes?
I can get two minutes. I'm probably gonna have a PowerPoint and still go through the, try to set up six or eight different parts of the county. And I have like little conferences and outreach programs. But at the moment, I went down this weekend, I was with my mother. She went to her own college this Thursday. They take her own oral medication. They said that, you know, she's going to be put on the hospice now. Taking her, she was visiting her sisters this weekend. I mean, she's, her spirit's pretty good, but the progosis is pretty loud. So right now, focused on family matters.
Sure.
But soon I'll try to.
Yeah, I'll talk to them at the Ministerial Association. I know that you're more than that when your folks come to the story.
Right, yeah. And that's gonna be the biggest challenge is, you know, the information there being, there's plenty already in print. It's just a matter of creating a receptive audience and that's challenging.
Ted, go ahead.
Oh, good name. Absolutely.
Yeah, big or medium?
Well, I'm actually a head.
Oh, well, my middle name is Ed.
Okay.
How've you been doing?
Pretty good. Yeah? How's Mike? Yeah? Good.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
He worked in the ministry.
I did too.
He's in operations.
He's in Mexico. Well, he's one of them. We won't go there. He's in Mexico. I just saw their house in Mexico. But he had to go down for the.
I feel also, yeah, it could be.
They told her to come down and stay with us, but she won't.
My dad was a guest on the Edwin Lowes tour. And I was junior. My son's, my son's a third. My grandson's four. King. Boy.
She got assigned this.
I'll tell you, you're gonna need another chair.
Yes, I know. We're gonna need another chair.
I'll get it. I'll get it. I got it. Okay. No. Actually, we just need exercise.
Is that it?
That's fine.
Excuse me. The payroll register. Sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
You'll have to take it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wrong card. Come here. Which side? Might be. My safe side.
Bring your chairs.
Getting better by the sip.
Already?
Yeah. Tim might be wired.
I'm waiting for that car to top.
I'm sorry.
Are you?
Morning. Hello.
Wait, you didn't have a carpal toe.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I agree.
Are we just adopting these all or no?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree.
Are we just adopting these all or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I understand.
I agree. Are we just adopting these all or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are we just adopting these all or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Are we just adopting these all or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Are we just adopting these all or no?
Yes.
Okay.
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 Soon I'll try to.
Yeah, I'll talk to them at the Ministerial Association. I know that you're more than that when you focus on different stories. Right, yeah. And that's gonna be the biggest challenge is, you know, the information there being, there's plenty already in print. It's just a matter of creating a receptive audience and that's challenging.
Ted, go ahead.
Oh, good name.
Yeah, big or medium?
Well, I'm actually a head.
Oh, well, my middle name is Ed.
Okay.
How've you been doing?
Pretty good. Yeah? How's Mike?
Good.
Yeah? Good.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
He worked in the ministry.
I did too.
He's in Mexico. Well, he's one of them. That's a, that's why. We won't go there. He's in Mexico. I just saw their house in Mexico.
Yeah. Good to hear.
He had to go down for the.
I feel also, yeah, it could be.
They told her to come down and stay with us, but she won't.
Hey, I thought my dad was, that's why I did Edwin Lowes tour. And I was junior. My son's, my son's a third. My grandson's four. King. Boy.
She got assigned this.
Mm-hmm. I'll tell you. You're gonna need another chair.
Yes, I know.
We're gonna need another chair. I'll get it. I'll get it. I got it. Okay. No. Actually, we just need exercise.
Is that it?
That's fine.
Excuse me. The payroll register.
Uh-huh.
Sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
You'll have to take it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wrong card.
Come here. Which side?
Might be.
My safe side.
Bring your chairs.
That's right. You're getting better by the sip.
Already?
Yeah. Tim might be wired.
No.
Hi, hello.
It's my neighbor.
It's my neighbor.
Wait, you didn't have a carpal toe.
Good.
Wait, you didn't have a carpal toe.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
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 She got assigned this.
Mm-hmm. I'll tell you. You're gonna need another chair.
Yes, I know. We're gonna need another chair.
I'll get it. I'll get it. I got it. Okay. No. Actually, we just need exercise.
Is that it?
That's fine.
Excuse me. The payroll register.
Uh-huh.
Sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
You'll have to take it.
Thank you.
I have a wrong card.
Come here. Which side?
Might be.
My safe side.
Bring your chairs.
That's right. You're getting better by the sip.
Already?
Yeah. Tim might be wired.
No.
Hi, hello.
Sit down.
It's my neighbor.
Wait, you didn't have a carpal toe.
Good.
I'm sorry.
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 Bring your chairs.
That's right. You're getting better by the sip.
Already?
Yeah. Tim might be wired.
No.
Hi, hello.
Sit down.
It's my neighbor.
Wait, you didn't have a carpal toe.
Good.
Good.
Wait, you didn't have a carpal toe.
Good.
Good.
I'm sorry.
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 Yes.
I'm really enjoying reading your writing.
Fantastic pieces.
I don't know how you do that.
I have.
It has to be from the other words, you couldn't do it.
It has to be from the other words, you couldn't do it.
I understand.
A-E-D. Just. Pardon? Are you in any shows lately?
No, sorry. Nah. The daddy.
Just the Hardee County show.
I put on a show for my wife every so often. I'll take the, I'll stand in front of the sink and kinda like I'm doing dishes and.
Of course, it's, 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 um, for two months. I had many events. I have other classes and then each other to say, gee, good job. And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job. And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
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 Your chairs are empty.
Pardon?
Are you in any shows lately?
No, sorry. Nah. The daddy.
Just the Hardee County show.
I put on a show for my wife every so often. I'll take the, I'll stand in front of the sink and kinda like I'm doing dishes and.
Of course, it's, 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 um, for two months. I had many events. I have other classes and then each other to say, gee, good job. And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by.
Yeah.
And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by.
Yeah.
And I came by.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by. And I didn't know that I was still in the job.
Yeah.
And I came by.
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 Yeah.
Seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundreds.
Seventeen.
The cost of this project is three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. There is a local match of two hundred and ninety-five dollars. There's Beth.
Okay, I'll read this resolution. The Hardy County Commission acknowledges the importance of Hardy County permanent books and the county clerk provides essential care, storage, and maintenance of the Hardy County West Virginia permanent and long-term books, and they are only limited funds available for this project. Now, therefore being resolved that the Hardy County Commission authorizes and supports the submission of a West Virginia County Records Management and Preservation Grant application for the purpose of repairing two Hardy County permanent books, the Hardy County Commission will, in implementing this project, abide by the understanding and assurances of the grant program. The Hardy County Commission acknowledges that a ten percent cash match is needed for all awarded budgeted expenditures adopted on this twenty-first day of October 2014 at a public meeting of the Hardy County Commission at which forum was present and unanimously voted affirmative. Do I hear motion that we approve this grant resolution to restore the books?
I approve it.
Good problem with seconds or any discussion? All those in favor, stick your hand up, same eye. Close same side, motion carried.
Okay, the next thing, the next grant is a Circuit Clerk grant. It's for scanning and indexing the eighteen hundreds to nineteen fifties chancery law files. The total cost of the scanning and indexing is ten thousand dollars. There is a nine hundred and ten dollar local match for this project.
Rose, is that also the West Virginia County Records Management?
Yes.
That you're getting the asking for the funds?
Okay.
Okay. I'm not going to read this resolution. It's the same as the one I just ran. Let's see, this one was to...
To scan and index.
Okay. Do I hear motion that we approve this grant for scanning and indexing records?
I'll say.
Good problem with seconds or any discussion? All those in favor, stick your hands up, same eye. Close same side, motion carried. Okay, Beth. Ready for you. You're ready for it. Say your name, number.
I'll give y'all this first.
See your smile, it's what you are. Face in the picture. Magazine there.
Which one?
I was in the newspaper quite last week. My name is Beth Dolan. I'm the Executive Director of the Hardy County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And this summer, I attended the Southeast Tourism Marketing Society Marketing College. The Marketing College is a three-year program that brings together tourism professionals from all over the South for an intensive week of learning about tourism, from economics to social media to how to format a brochure correctly. So, we cover a pretty good game of things. One of the classes that had a great impact on me detailed how to determine the economic impact of tourism on your county or your community. I've taken the process learned in that class, and today, I'm bringing you a report that shows you how tourism dollars directly benefit Hardy County and how your investment as a county commissioner, commission directly supports our businesses and families. I provided each of you with a copy of the Hardy County Economic Impact of Tourism Report for 2012. The report is dated 2012 because this is the latest research available from the state of West Virginia. I'm sorry. They typically have the numbers done every two years. So, our most, so here are our most recent numbers, which represent some pretty good news. As of 2012, two hundred and forty-nine jobs were because of tourism, which is the equivalent of three point three total jobs here within our county. Since 2000, there's been a steady increase in direct total travel spending in Hardy County. In 2000, the number was twelve point two million dollars. As of 2012, the number was twenty-two point three million dollars, for an increase of eighty-two point seven, or eighty-two percent, I'm sorry, eighty-two point seven percent. On an average day, four thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars is generated daily in combined state and local revenues. This breaks down to six hundred and forty-one dollars in daily local county tax revenues. Each of the four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight Hardy County households paid three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents less in local and state taxes. In other words, if tourism did not exist, each household would have to pay three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents more in state and local taxes to replace the taxes generated by tourist spending. As you can see, your support of the Hardy County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which in turn works to bring more than tourists and tourism dollars to the county, is an important part of our nonprofiture. Just two weeks ago, I attended a legislative listening tour and tourism which mentioned eight times by business owners as being an important aspect to their business. My board thought you'd like to see these numbers that we can keep working together to grow this section of our economy. And I'm done. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any. Thank you for bringing this report.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And at the, I don't know if y'all saw the front page newspaper of mine, beautiful picture, the whole photo is put on there. But we, we love you, Beth. Thank you so much. Hardy Grant and Hardy County brought home an award from the West Virginia State Tourism Department for West Virginia Community Development. We put together the Go Deep, Go High, Go Wild brochure, and this brochure was a cooperative effort from counties along with the other businesses that were here in our area supporting that brochure. And so, we're really excited to have brought that home, especially to beat out the Greenbrier in Marion County Parks and Rec. So, thank you very much. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Beth.
Here's what I just said, if you want to copy it.
Fran and Brown.
Yes, you should have before you, are you ready for us?
Yes. You come on up here, state your name while you're here.
Okay, sorry about that.
Actually, Greg could probably come up here as well. This is, and Paul.
Paul's here with us.
Okay.
Morning, Paul. Frances Welton, Hardy County LEPC Chair. We should have before you a letter requesting funding for Hardy County residents that are taking a first responder course. The total amount that we need is to support their tuition, their books, and their background check and testing fee. It comes to two hundred and forty dollars for per student. We have eighteen students right now. We need four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. This, the first responder class is an introduction to volunteers and gives them the training they need to be able to assist all other EMS personnel in the county. As we've heard before, it's very expensive to receive training. It's also, we're short of a lot of volunteers or need volunteers to assist. The skills that they learn will assist them as well in their private lives, out of the neighborhood, in your workplace. Some of these people are firefighters, the rest of them are volunteers. We do have one CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, and we're receiving the training. So, that's why we're here, is to request the funding to cover the expenses for this class.
Okay. Should this go, probably through the ambulance start? I mean, it really doesn't make any difference.
It doesn't make any difference to us. We just need funding and thought maybe the commissioners could get the funding out of their budget. I don't know if this is in any ambulance authority issue or not, I really don't know.
Greg, you want to add anything?
I think that it, you know, the ambulance authority would be, would be glad to participate and help in any way we can. Yeah. Right. I mean, irregardless, it's a fund that would go to the end users. It really doesn't matter which group I think that's running through. And we would be glad to participate in any way we can.
Do you have some type of, I think, checklist to where if you pay or we pay for this, these volunteers will give back in our own community, or what's, how's that?
You have six of them right now that are volunteer fire company members and volunteer fire company. I don't have a complete breakdown because not all of them have been able to attend the classes on a regular basis because of emergencies. Yesterday, we were out and threw three calls and went on a call immediately after class. And, or shortly after the class, we had the one CERT member, which is with the, with our CERT team. The others are community members. We have one is a new resident to the community, and she is a nurse and wants to get into volunteering. Being able to use her skill, she had worked for Purdue in that capacity, was a trainer for Purdue, actually. The others are just on to public members who want to get into the volunteer world through emergency services. And this class will assist them in their ability to be able to go ahead and go into the EMD class if they choose to do so. This really, this class, I'm thinking it myself, this class actually is what I took when I took my first EMD class back in the dark ages. It's pretty comprehensive.
I think it's seventy-five hour class.
Yes, it is.
It's definitely good for the community. I mean, it's going to put more people out here with the skills that's needed.
And the reason, the other thing that came through the LEPC is because there is a new module that has been added to this class in hazardous materials management. And this is the same as the introductory course to hazmat management and team efforts.
Okay. Do I hear motion that we approve four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for emergency medical responder classes to help assist the people that are, to help assist volunteers that will...
We do have some Brad County students. These are for Hardy County students.
Oh, this is just for Hardy County students. Do I hear motion that we approve this, whether it goes through the commission board, the ambulance authority, for these classes?
I approve.
All right, it's been a problem with the seconds or any discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple. What's the duration of the training?
I'm sorry?
How long, how long?
Seventy-five hours.
It's a seventy-five hour training.
No, I think he wants to know how long, is this...
A week, a month, day?
Certified, how long will they be certified?
A year certification?
It's a year certification, and then they'll re-cert.
But re-cert is different than the total class. They may do a one-day re-cert.
Hey, Jay, some of the discussions we had at the LEPC, it was reluctance to, in the future, and through some of the conversations with the ambulance authority drama, with the worry that the county was going to make an investment, you know, where do we provide an incentive? And at what point are we, as taxpayers, put out the dry if those volunteers just go to other counties and use what we paid for? This is not a marketable skill. This is an EMR which replaced the old first responders class. At the EMT level, that's a marketable skill. If you were to fully fund somebody's training on an EMT level, they could go to surrounding counties or surrounding states, have a marketable skill, and then perhaps, you know, we've lost what our investment is.
Who teaches this?
This class is, this class is being offered through RISA eight, and is being taught by Tammy Rathford, who is an instructor for RISA eight. She's a local girl, but she's...
And it's five hours total?
No, it's seventy-two, it's seventy-five hours.
Okay, so it's over a period of what, several weeks?
Yes.
Once a week?
We started week before last, and we go until the second week in November. We go on Saturday afternoons from noon until six, and then on Mondays from six until nine.
Is there provision for a person who might miss a meeting or two to make that, to make that application?
Now, if all eighteen people are in register and stay in the class, Tammy will send you an invoice. It may not be this total amount.
Thank you. Please report the matching report. Thank you.
What we actually need is the total two hundred and forty for those people who stay in the class and complete the class. So, it's just not like a check, you know, with a surplus, there won't be those.
Is there any further discussion?
All those in favor, stick your hand up, same eye. Close same time, motion carried.
Then, along with this, we encourage them to be, assist with our drill. We have a drill coming up on October the twenty-seventh, and the commissioners will also, or have also been invited to attend that drill at the new nine-one-one center. So, that's just a reminder for that. Okay. Thank you very much.
This question I have is, is which organization or county are you going to fund it? We need to know that. If it's going to be...
Yeah, whether she needs to send...
LEPC, or to the commission, or to the authority. I'd say it's to you, and then you write them a check.
I think that'd be better if you were all involved, you know, if it goes through you all.
Well, they'll be giving, they'll be giving a list of everybody that could, so that if they need them or can use them in any capacity at all.
So, everybody knows.
Everybody knows, they've had background checks, they've got prints, they've already done that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ted, sorry. Ted, how you doing?
I'm doing good.
Good.
I brought David Rudic with me.
Well, that's good.
Well, that's no...
Have a seat. State your name while you're here. If you would, please.
Don't have any sweets or anything out there. I think you ought to. Well, first of all, I'm Ted Gardner from Lock River Valley Property Owners Association.
I'm David Rudic here as a concerned property owner within the subdivision.
And we thank you for hearing us today. I guess that, put it in a nutshell, this is about zoning, covenants, and subdivisions. Last year, the Hardy County Planning Office granted, I don't know if you call it an exception to the covenants and the zoning, by allowing the farmer's market to open up on Mill Gap Road. This Mill Gap Road was called an event. I can find no record of events, you know, definition of events in planning. I did find it in the ABC license where an event is ten days. That's a, they'll issue an event license for ten days. Well, since they've, they've done this, they have went ahead and applied for an ABC license. Now, at the time when I looked into this, I had no idea what kind of ABC license it was going to be. And of course, I could, the way I can extrapolate everything, I know I'm going to wake up in the middle of the morning, look out the window and see a bar or a restaurant, a lounge sitting over there. But apparently, it appears it was to sell West Virginia wine out of the bottle. But that, that was standard. That makes it a retail outlet. It just changes the whole thing. It's not an event anymore, it's a retail outlet. I called Melissa about this, and she says Hardy County has nothing to do with approval. Yet, the letter that I found from her, she says, or she sent to me, says that they forward it on and they approve it as long as they sell West Virginia wine and such and such. Well, all of these actions conflict with the covenants. And just because a board of directors of a homeowners association says it's okay with them, it doesn't make it okay with the covenants. Covenants have to be revised. And we'd seek some sort of protection from that, that they would have to show in the covenants that this is permissible. Then, and then I might add too, that this whole thing smacks of some years back when we woke up one morning and found that a nice little B&amp;B next door to us became the guest house with a restaurant, hotel, dining room, and lounge. You know, I don't really recall ever being in public notice that all this stuff was going to happen. Most of the people in the area knew it was happening because there's a lot of things going on. But this little farmer's market could easily grow into something like this, you know, inch by inch by adding these little, little features. They have a kitchen, health-approved kitchen where they can make sandwiches. It's very concerning to a lot of us here, not, not just us that are sitting here. So, we would, and I guess too, I need to add that we've learned that they're now moving their guest house real estate office to the farmer's market. Now, it's an office building. I guess they figure inch by inch, anything's a cinch, you know, but somehow, we got to stop this. Their, their address listed in the phone book says the farmer's market address, the, the address on the webpage for them says the farmer's market, the listings on, with the real estate board says that address. And I'm sure there's some other things. But anyway, what we, I would like to see is that the event be disallowed, that the ABC license, and I, to this day, don't know whether it was approved. The letter that Melissa gave me approving, approving it from the county was dated May, which was kind of implied that they've been selling it all summer. Yet, it's canceled now because I guess they only take it for a six-month period during summer. So, you know, I would like to see that not renewed, and I would like to see the, the office closed. I mean, it is a residential lot, under the Lock River Valley covenants, which precludes it's for residential only, and is reported with the county. Anybody go back and read it in the county. There might be a fight from the board of directors who, I call rogue directors, because, you know, they do what they want to do, when they want to do it.
Well, actually, I don't know if, if this is an issue for us, Senator. It looks to me like that would have to go before the Lock River Valley Board of Directors and, and the attorneys to change that covenant. So, I mean, you know, that's, this covenant was drawn up years ago by, who? Lock River Property and Association?
The, the Royal Land. Yeah.
Yeah.
Mike, this is not a complicated situation. And, and you are involved, and I'll tell you how. I know it's local, it's a local problem, but it does have county ordinance implications. We're dealing with an elephant under the tent business here. Okay? And I like elephants, by the way. I do. Started out as a farmer's market, they went to the planning department and got approval as an event. It then became a flea market, with a lot of retail businesses there. It's now become a real estate office. We have zoning requirements in our county. And here's renewal coming. And we have both our covenances, which is all local problem, but we have a county ordinance that carries zoning. All right? If the area itself is totally residential, there is no other commercial development along Mill Gap Road from two fifty-nine all the way up to Charred Pond. A full-time real estate office is a commercial development. We'll handle it in our subdivision ordinances, our covenances. You have to handle it. There's only restrictions.
Okay, well, we have Melissa with us today. Melissa, you want to add to this?
Sure, yeah.
This is our county planner. Do you all know Melissa? Okay.
Well, I hear three issues here. We've got the alcohol license, the event status, and the real estate office. And this is the first I've heard of a real estate office. When all this started, before the farmer's market even started, I talked with Bob, and he told me his future plans. I told him, you cannot put a real estate office in there. So, this is the first I've heard that there's suspicion of him actually doing that, because he was told not to do that.
I contacted the board of our, our subdivision, and that was the first I heard of it too. However, you go to the website, that's the address they use. I contacted the Real Estate Commission in West Virginia, that's their address now. I contacted MRIS, which is the multiple listing agency, that's the address they had listed.
All right, that, we'll, we'll deal with that issue. That's a zoning issue. We will deal with that.
That's exactly what I hear.
So, let me address the other two issues. The alcohol license, I can provide you all with the letter that I sent. Basically, there's a form that's included in any application for ABC, and there's one little sheet that says to contact the local municipality or county. Actually, it says municipality, it doesn't even address county, because most West Virginia counties do not have zoning. So, it's not a habit of the ABC organization to even call county and say, is this in compliance with zoning, because it's never been an issue. But they found out we have zoning, so they have started to ask recently, on and off, sporadically, they will require, you know, someone to have us, you know, send some sort of information about our zoning. And what I, you know, what I had said in the letter was that this is, you know, it's being used as a farmer's market. Now, we have not given them any kind of approval for this farmer's market, because we don't have anything in our regulations that say we need to approve events. So, we have no provisions to approve an event. We just, we just recognize that it not really, it's not truly a land use, because they work building buildings, it's not full-time, and we put restrictions on them from April one... And I can't even really do that, but I said to them, April to October, Saturdays, ten to one. That's the time that we understand you're operating this. And if you continue to do that, then it's an event. But if you, if you go outside those restricted times, then we may have to consider this a land use. So, and we don't, we don't have any authority to go against your covenants and restrictions when you're homeowners. Like you said, that's, that's an issue.
Well, I'm agreeing with that. I'm not disagreeing.
So, anyway, the fact of the alcohol. So, I did send them a letter saying that they're not zoning commercials, that we're considering this an event, and these are the times that they're supposed to be operating. And that's all I said. I didn't say, we think it's fine, or we don't think it's fine, because they don't even ask for our opinion. So, they just say, is it zoned for that? So, I said, no, it's not, but, but it's an event. So, and then the third issue, the second issue, go back to that, the event status, like I said, we don't have that in our ordinance. We've chosen not to, to regulate events, because it's a little more regulation than we really want to do. We try to be, you know, minimal. But if there's some issues with the events, like is there safety, public safety, parking, I've told them, they needed to check the DOH, you know, Health Department, I've told them all of those things. So, I think they've probably done those things. But we, you know, since we don't have an event ordinance, and I can't say, yes, you can do this, and it's an event, what I would try to do is prevent problems, traffic, parking...
I'd rather not distract from the, while we're here as an event. I mean, I've accepted that, but, and haven't heard anything from us concerning events.
I just wanted to explain that.
I am here, I am here from the standpoint of establishing any type of commercial, full-time commercial business.
Right. And that real estate office is a different issue. That's the first I've heard of that, yes.
That's exactly right.
And like I said, I specifically told him, do not do that, and maybe... And, and like I said, I specifically told him, do not do that, and maybe, you know, and, and what oftentimes people do operate businesses from inside structures, and if they don't have any outward evidence that they're doing anything, we're not gonna go in and knock on the door and look through their house and see what they're doing, that's not what we wanna do, but...
All you have to do is go to their website.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a good clue, and that's good evidence to you, so I will, I will definitely check into that.
Yeah, I'm at this primary agency here.
Yeah, that's...
Has a property on one.
And, and I don't think he can deny I said, don't do that, already, so...
I would inform you.
I would like to come back to the event.
Okay.
When does an event become a retail establishment?
Well, you know, most, most people don't have ordinances for this. Like, I know Jefferson County is now creating an ordinance for this, so they can define all those little things. I had a discussion at one point with our planning commission about event, you know, saying, what's the difference? And we said, if there's any permanent, if they're doing it full-time, if there's any permanent evidence on the property that they're, you know, built structures, things like that, that's a land use, but, you know, we want to move towards supporting farm-based things like farm markets, and farm markets are really popular right now, and they're really good for communities, and we hate to, you know, to get into regulating that. In the future, we would actually like to put in our ordinance that we allow those, so...
Let, let me add information there, and I don't think it's worth the time of the commission to have a back-and-back discussion of this sort right now. I'll be glad to meet with you in your office and discuss this.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, but I think that when you have something that's away from the farmer's market now and more becomes a small retail-type establishment...
Right.
Selling numbers of different other goods.
I don't, I don't dispute that, they're pushing the lie. They like, they, they've done that, so...
So, I do think that's a different situation. But in any case, I'll simply conclude with what we're requesting, is simply rescinding any present permits they have, because they're not operating as a farmer's market.
Right, so they don't have any permits from us, because we don't have, we don't have regulations in the books that say, you can issue a permit for that, so...
But more important, checking into zoning requirements, as far as opening up a full-time commercial establishment on the premises.
We will definitely check into that.
May I suggest too, in, in the future, when you're dealing with subdivisions, and they bring, and I'm not sure what has been brought in, but to get a variance or event, that they not only bring in a letter from the board of directors, but bring in a copy of the...
Covenants.
Covenants, as on file here, because generally speaking, board of directors do not change covenants.
No, no, we wouldn't. We, we try to always abide by covenants, so sometimes we don't find little things that are in, you know, four, four-lot subdivision or something.
Sure.
We don't catch those, but we don't wanna go against covenants. But I, I do have some things here for you, like the, the definition of event that we were, you know, tossing around, it's not official, but, but you can look at that, give me comments on it.
I'll be glad to come in with your thoughts on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, fellas.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Bridget.
Good morning. Lucas C. has asked if we would let him know when we got to...
I don't have any real estate, that's crazy.
He's getting it. Hey, Bridget, I'll go getting it, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Here's your motion, yes.
He's in his way, Miss Bridget. Thank you.
While we're waiting on Lucas, we'll go ahead, I've got a letter here, I'll read it. It says, "To the Honorable County Court of Hardy County, the assessor of Hardy County, Jim D. Ratsford, has completed the farm census for 2014 and has satisfactorily complied with the requirements of the Farm Statistics Law. He is therefore eligible to receive compensation from the county court according to Chapter 7, Article 7, Section 16 of the New Code of West Virginia, signed by Commissioner of Agriculture and Walts County. Got your motion, we print this. I'm moving it through. Probably in a second, there's a great discussion. All of those in table 65, the same aisle?
What is that amount, Mike?
What's that?
What is the amount of the compensation?
It's a percentage of what he collects, it's not on here.
I looked it up, it's ten or fifteen. I can look it up.
Okay.
Okay, state your name and why you're here.
Good morning, my name is Bridget Coe, and I am counsel for the Hardy County Commission, and for Commissioners Teets and Kepplinger in their official capacity in Civil Action 14C17. And the last time that I was here before you, I had presented to you regarding the rulings that were made from the bench at the September 29 hearing, and I told you at that time that we didn't have a written order for that hearing, but that we did go ahead and file a notice of appeal of the orders that had been entered in 14C17. That notice of appeal was filed and received by the Supreme Court on September 29, 2014, and at that time, when you list the petitioners in the notice of appeal, I had listed Commissioners Teets and Kepplinger and the Hardy County Commission with me, Bridget Coe, and Amber Moore as counsel, as we have been representing you from the beginning of this action as the Hardy County Commission and as the commissioners acting in their official capacity. The written order addresses a number of things that I would like to review this morning. The court did find that the county had refunded appropriately the fees that were ordered to be refunded in the order of August 29, 2014. The October 10 order awarded the petitioner's attorney's fees in the amount of $112,000, and we have appealed the awarding of, of attorney's fees that's ordered to be paid by the county commission, however, the order also stays the execution of judgment for 60 days, and therefore, the, the payment of the attorney's fees will be tabled in accordance with that stay until we have an opportunity to address that with the Supreme Court. The motion to amend and correct a prior filing to make part of the record the rule on how the county sets their regular meetings was granted, and that's now part of the record. The motion to join the Cape and Valley Bank, and Jack Walters as trustee of Cape and Valley Bank, was denied by the court, and the motion of Wendy Miller to withdraw as a party petitioner was granted by the court in the written order. The motion for injunctive relief was granted, and in this part of the order, the judge made a ruling that the county commission could not reconsider the enactment of an ordinance assessing a fee unless all of the residents of Hardy County are without ambulance service. So, we are appealing that part of the order as well. And then the, the order also has repayment of county funds as the part of the order that, as it's ordered, and it says, while the fees have been substantially refunded to those individuals who paid the coffers of Hardy County, and more specifically, the courthouse improvement fund are still short, $1.13 million. And the judge goes on to rule that an entry of judgment against respondents, Teets and Kepplinger, in favor of the Hardy County Commission, and finds that this creates a conflict situation, which we are appealing, and, and has ordered that Lucas C. as the prosecutor of Hardy County protect the interests of the Hardy County Commission with regard to the order for the $1.13 million. So, we received the order, it was entered October 10, 2014, we have prepared a notice of appeal of that order. In the notice of appeal, we have the petitioners, Jane Michael Teets, Commissioner, William E. Kepplinger, Commissioner, and the Hardy County Commission represented by Bridget Coe of Steptown Johnson, together with Ansel Ramey, who is a very experienced appellate attorney with our firm, and Lucas C. as the prosecutor for Hardy County Commission. In our assignments of error with the notice of appeal, we have listed seven assignments of error. I will not read each, each one of those, but what I will do is submit that for the commission, and it can be made part of the record in whatever way that you feel is necessary to make it part of the record. But we are appealing the fact that the circuit court failed to adopt the findings of fact that were made by the three-judge panel in the litigation between the same parties on the same facts, the fact that the circuit court erred in the application of the Open Government Proceedings Act with regard to the county commission's proceedings. We are appealing the overturning of the purchase of the building and the emergency ambulance fee, and the very broad and sweeping ruling of the court saying that this entity cannot enact a fee to support your emergency ambulance service. We are appealing the award of attorney's fees and the refusal of our offer of evidence at the hearing on September 29. And we are also appealing the holding that the two commissioners, who we have always maintained were acting within the scope of their official duties as county commissioners, personally liable for the expenditure on the building. We received yesterday at 4:20 a motion for contempt filed by David Judy. He is asking the court to hold Commissioners Teets and Kepplinger and the Hardy County Commission and council in contempt for not paying his attorney's fees. He asked for an expedited ruling on that, because there was a county commission meeting today, and we have an opportunity to respond to that and respond to it substantively in writing. The hearing cannot be set sooner than seven days from the filing. But the, the basis of his motion for contempt is the judgment that he is to receive $112,000 in attorney's fees, and we are appealing that judgment. There's a 60-day stay on the execution of the judgment. When we file our notice of appeal, we also will file a motion to the Supreme Court to ask them to extend the 60-day stay that's in place right now pending the appeal, instead of paying $112,000 only to have to collect it if it's overturned by the Supreme Court. That amount that was awarded by Judge Frye includes not only the work that was done on the civil action 14C17, but it goes back and awards him for work that was done on the action to remove Commissioners Teets and Kepplinger, which they lost. And he made a motion for attorney's fees in that part of the case, and it was denied. And now we have an order going back and awarding him for work that was already denied. The proper remedy for enforcement of a judgment for money damages is not a contempt order, it is, under Rule 69, a execution or another final process, which would include a writ of execution or a writ of suggestion, suggestive execution. This is not the proper way to proceed to collect the, the judgment, even if in fact the $112,000 is upheld by the Supreme Court. That's my report for this morning, you may have some questions, and Lucas may have some additional information.
The only thing I just wanna make clear, what this order basically directs me to do is represent the county commission as a body, perhaps against two of its principles, against you two, which I'm not even sure I can do, I'm gonna talk to Officer Disciplining Counsel, make sure that that's proper. Basically, it's, it's having me represent the county commission's body, perhaps against you two as principles, because that's, because that's in the best interest of the county. I talked to Bridget about this earlier. If, 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 if the appeal's not granted, and y'all, the appeal's denied, I'll be coming to y'all, asking y'all whether you want me to execute on y'all's property, which, which y'all couldn't vote on, because the person who affects y'all, I'd have to ask AJ, and I don't even know if that's proper, because I don't think one person can even vote on that matter. So, I just wanna let y'all know, clear what it directs me to do.
So, you're checking in to find out the...
Yes. Because I don't see how I can represent y'all as a body against two members of the body. I don't see how I can do that, but that's what the order directs me to do, so...
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
And then it'd basically be up to AJ to direct me how to proceed, because like I said, y'all can't, y'all couldn't personally vote on whether to execute on your own property, because that would leave AJ to be the one to decide that.
And then, how can one person...
And I, I don't, I don't think you can.
I don't either.
Yeah, I don't think you can, because they would be disqualified from, they don't even think that would affect their personal financial situation.
Okay, so...
So, the next procedural steps are the filing of the notice of appeal of the written order with a motion to incorporate our earlier notice of appeal that we filed September 29, 2014. Those two appeals will become one. The court will review the notice of appeal, and if they accept the appeal, will issue a, an order that directs our briefing schedule. And the briefing schedule includes preparing something called an appendix, where you submit all of the lower court documents to the Supreme Court for review, and you file your initial brief. I anticipate that wouldn't be ordered to be filed until late December or early January. The respondent's brief, the petitioners would have an opportunity to respond to our brief, and then we would have the final reply to that response. It may or may not be set for oral argument before the Supreme Court, they can also do something called a memorandum decision, in which they would review the filings of the parties and the records below, and then they would issue a written opinion, that's a memorandum decision. So, that, that's the next few months, and we'll just continue to keep you, advise and provide you with copies, and I believe we probably will have a hearing within the next seven days on this motion for contempt, which the response has not been filed, I drafted it yesterday after I received the motion for contempt at 4:20, so we have a response prepared, although I may add some additional case law to what I have prepared.
What can he, anything? Someone wants to...
The, the proper procedure for enforcing a judgment is to do a writ of execution, not a motion for contempt, and there's a reason we have the rules of civil procedure, and, so if he goes forward and issues an order, a contempt order, that will also become part of the appeal process. It's not in accordance with the rules.
When was the motion for contempt filed by Mr.?
I received it by email at 4:20 yesterday evening, with a, an email to the clerk of the judge, asking for an expedited ruling because there was a county commission meeting this morning.
Okay.
So, I think he expected that he was going to have a ruling on the motion for contempt by this morning.
The reason I asked is because, as of yesterday, the circuit court here doesn't have any, anything like that.
So, in response, my initial response to the clerk was that I respectfully request seven days to respond substantively and to have a hearing, so...
And I just wanted to reiterate, one of my jobs is representing the county commission... And I just wanted to reiterate, one of my jobs as representative of the County Commission is to make sure you all don't dispose or transfer any of your assets. So I just want to make sure you all are not to do that, or I might have to take a perfect action against you all if you do something like that.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't need a motion or anything on anything, do we?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay.
Who's paying for all this? The County Commission?
Paying for what?
Her services.
I represent the Hardy County Commission, and we're appealing the judgment order, so at this point, the bills will continue to be submitted to the Hardy County Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Bridget. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Teats. I never heard a vote of the County Commission to appoint her or hire her as a counsel for the whole commission body. When did that take place?
I can address the question.
Okay.
When the initial petition was filed by the petitioners in late November 2013, it was not filed appropriately, however, it was amended. And the petition was refiled in December of 2013. And at that time, the Hardy County Commission appropriately delivered that petition to their insurance provider, the West Virginia County Risk Pool. The West Virginia County Risk Pool contacted me and Steptoe and Johnson and asked us to defend the Hardy County Commission and Commissioners Kepplinger and Commissioner Teats in their official capacities and defend the actions against them. The code requires that the petitions for removal be heard promptly, and that is so that the Commissioners can get back to business of doing their work for the county. That action was delayed somewhat, although it was originally set for January, it was delayed somewhat and wasn't heard until March of 2014. The final order of the three judge tribunal was not issued until May 12 of 2014. And at that point in time, the West Virginia County Risk Pool's coverage for the action concluded. And the County Commission was asked whether or not they wish to continue to have Steptoe and Johnson and specifically me represent the County Commission on the remaining action that had been bifurcated by the three judge panel. That came before the Commission in late July, August of 2014. And the Commission, at a meeting, signed the retention agreement that retained me to represent them. And I believe the decision was made based upon the fact that I was very intimate with the facts of the case and the record in the case, and that to have another attorney come into the action at that point in time would probably cost double instead of having us continue to represent the Commission. And that is where we are, so.
Okay. I've got a question for you, Bridget.
Yes.
Like, you know, Mr. Nead asked that question. Is he allowed to ask that question since he's not on the agenda 15 minutes before the meeting? Just, I just would like to know.
You have an open meeting, and your practice has been to, when you have someone presenting, if there are other people present who ask questions, you hear those questions, and you can say, we'll reply at a later time, or if you'd like to be added to the agenda for the next hearing, we'll address that at that time. It's within your judgment to make a decision whether to respond at that time or if you would like additional time?
Well, you know, it really doesn't bother me. I just know that with all that's happened, it's changed everything. You know, always before, if somebody walked in the door and said, we'd like to ask you a question, we'd tell them. But it seems like that since everything that's happened, we're not allowed to do those practices. And that's really why I was asking you. But thank you. Okay.
I also have a question.
Yes.
What is the date of when you were, the decision to hire you to represent in the current case?
You know what? I would have to go back and look specifically at the records that went back and forth. The agreement letter is dated August 4th, which sets out the terms of the fee agreement. And I believe it was signed on August 25th, but I have to go back and check that, AJ. And Bruce has a copy of that if he would like to see it.
I just turned a call doing that.
Okay.
And the other, one more question. The Risk Pool paid, will pay most of the deal with regard to the removal?
That's correct. There was coverage under the policy for that action.
Are they paying for this?
The second part of the action, there isn't, there is not insurance coverage for it.
So what we're doing now is going to cost the taxpayers of Party County?
Yes.
Okay. So in other words, two commissioners are being defended by the taxpayers of Party County?
The Hardy County Commission and two commissioners in their official capacity, taking action within their official capacity as a quorum of the agency.
All right. Thank you, Bridget.
Thanks, Bridget.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is county clerk rules for conducting public meetings, permission to review and consider vote to adopt the same. Has everybody looked over this?
Rules that are sent to the ethics commission to review.
Didn't say that.
I don't have a copy of that.
He didn't say that. He implied that, but he didn't say that.
Is this the one you were going to submit?
Yeah. I haven't done, I did.
And they approved?
Yes. I had some minor suggestions, which were optional, so what I had in there, some of what I had in there was more stringent than what was required. So after talking with, I forget his name, is that this commission attorney? I took that more stringent over town.
Has Lucas looked over this?
Yes. This is due from one of the, couple weeks ago. It's life, yeah.
But it's basically the same.
Yes. He wanted some more detail. Said it suggested there was more detail on the top portion. If you want time to re-reflect about them, you know, with the table.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
All right. You don't need to vote on that, do you? Okay, let's see. The budget revision, we don't have to do that before we're, all right. The hearing is on the Beard Campus State.
That's at 11. I also have on there to create a fund 074 for prosecuting attorney drug forfeiture fund.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see.
Checking camp. And there's the order. We have monies and we need a place to put them.
Okay. This order made this 21st day of October 2014 at a regularly scheduled commission meeting is to create a fund in the name of prosecuting attorney drug forfeiture fund, whereas in West Virginia Code 60A-7-706 and 707, the County Commission is authorized to create a special fund for allocation or transfer to, whereas a separate checking account will be open for which the money is collected from the proceeds of the sale of forfeiture property. Therefore, it is hereby ordered that the fund number shall be 074 to be named prosecuting attorney drug forfeiture fund. Do I hear a motion that we approve this order?
I think we approve that order.
I'll say. In seconds, ready discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify the same eye. Impose the same sign. Motion carried. Okay. I guess we're done until 11 o'clock for the hearing. What did you say, Val?
Should I have my break? You're going to recess at 11?
We can. Yeah, we can.
Tried to give them a little buffer because there'd probably be a lot of partisan coming in.
Oh, for that hearing, did they?
Like they did the other?
Yeah.
Gene, would that have been?
Or was it? The three of us?
Just a reminder that we will have a telephone conference meeting, 1:00 on Friday, and permission to invite you would just to be at that meeting.
Mr. General Speaker?
On Friday at 1:00, and that would be an executive session of the County Commission, because it would be covered under attorney-client privilege. And.
This Friday?
This Friday at 1:00.
Does that give you notice? And can you get that notice for special, special minutes? Oh, it's on the meeting, it's just a private session.
Attorney-client session, yes. And I would like Lucas C. to be there as well. He's been directed in that. I'm going to tell him right now.
Okay.
That'll be the next time I have time to talk about the.
Is the Beard Campus, I think that's not open? Yeah, that's going to be a fantastic.
Oh, Jim, I'll thank you guys.
He passed, and it was not a will found. One of the children is, one of the executives, and subsequently, they'll take will and coffee on the will found and welding manual. Which completely cuts all the kids out of the, from being there. Pretty highly. Do you have a minute to follow me?
Yeah, I do, yeah.